Good evening and welcome to our Glendale City Council meeting. If you would like to comment on any item on the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name when it's your turn to speak and you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wyers, Vice Mayor Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mollner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome to Glendale City Council meeting of April 23rd, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not necessary because everybody is in attendance at the moment, if you'd take note. The next two items on our agenda are the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And please forgive me because I'm going to mess this name up, but I'm going to try as hard as I can to get it right. The venerable Master Tam Luen from Truck Lamb Buddhist Temple of Glendale is going to give our opening prayer. Gentlemen, if it's appropriate, if you're wearing a hat, if you would remove it, if everyone would please stand for the opening and then remain standing afterwards for our pledge of allegiance. Venerable?
(Singing) Nguyng tu ca tue ngia ca tue ngia tu ya luk thay heng ca tue ngia. Nghe nghe tai trung ca tue ngia yin ngueyng te bi thue ngia ho. Nguyng tu ca tue ngia ca tue ngia tu ya luk thay heng ca tue ngia. Nghe nghe tai trung ca tue ngia yin ngueyng te bi thue ngia ho. Nguyng tu ca tue ngia ca tue ngia tu ya luk thay heng ca tue ngia. Nghe nghe tai trung ca tue ngia yin ngueyng te bi thue ngia ho. Nam no tiu tai yang kiac tue ngia bo ta. Nam no tiu tai yang kiac tue ngia bo ta. Nam no tiu tai yang kiac tue ngia bo ta ma ta.
Everyone, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the consideration of the voting meeting, April 9, 2024. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve April 9, 2024 minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I move reapprove the minutes of the April 9, 2024 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes, do have it, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from April 12, 2024, special voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve April 12, 2024 minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I move reapprove the minutes of April 12, 2024, special voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes, do have it, that motion also carries. Moving on to consent agenda, we have three items, I'm sorry, we have items three through 14. Items on the consent agenda are routine nature, but they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Have we got any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 14?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three through 14.
Three through 13.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mayor, correction.
Yes.
It's items three through 13, not 14.
There's a 14.
Three through 13.
There's an item 14.
I have three through 14. Three through 14.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a motion. The second we have, there was no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes, do have it, that motion also carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read consent resolution items 15 through 18 by number and title?
Item 15, resolution number R-24-26, resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, directing and entering into a community development block grant, CDBG CV3 agreement with Phoenix Gospel Mission, Inc., for heat relief respite centers. Item 16, resolution number R-24-27, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the placement of three recognition plaques in the heart of Glendale neighborhood commemorating Glendale's Hispanic heritage and community importance. Item 17, resolution number R-24-28, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Commission for the community fishing program in the city of Glendale. Item 18, resolution number R-24-29, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, authorizing and directing the entering into amendment number 1, 24-0009575-1 to the intergovernmental agreement, IGA 21-0008103-I, with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the construction of sidewalks and related work. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve items 15 through 18 on the consent resolutions agenda?
I move we approve the described linking agreement with Language Line Services and authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement. What? Is it 19?
15 through 18.
Oh, 15 through 18. Oh, I'll take that back. 19. I don't know.
Mayor.
I don't have it.
Go ahead.
I move we approve consent resolutions 15 through 18.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes, do have it, that motion also carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 19?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Language Line Services, Inc., for foreign language interpretation and translation services. There are no speaker cards.
Okay. Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described linking agreement with Language Line Services and waiving beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
As is usual for me, I will be voting no on this item and the other items under bidding contracts, as is my habit and practice. I believe that this action has no continuity of oversight by council members as these contracts are four year, as these contracts are five years long and council terms are for four years. Thank you, Mayor. I vote nay.
Councilmember Clark, votes nay. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 20?
Award of RFP 24-35 and authorization for the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement, C24-0349, with the Clifton Larson Allen LLP, to provide external audit services. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 20?
Yes, Mayor. I move reapprove item 20.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 21?
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Innovative Interfaces, Inc., for library, mobile application, and ratifying expenses. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? No. Can I get a motion to approve item 21?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 21 as described by the city clerk.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, we have no speaker cards, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Item 22, Ms. Bauer, if you would, please.
Award of invitation for bid, 23-37, authorization to enter into an agreement and approve expenditure of funds for the purchase of power tools and accessories from Wagner Tools, Inc. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 22? Anybody?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we approve item 22.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Moving on to item 23, land development actions. Ms. Bauer.
Resolution number R-24-30, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving general plan amendment, GPA 23-03, for property located at 7448 North 83rd Avenue and ordinance number O24-09, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at 7448 North 83rd Avenue from A1 Agricultural to R1-8, single residence-8, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on item 23, resolution R-24-30 and ordinance 024-09. Ms. Perry.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This presentation is requesting council approval of a minor general plan amendment as well as approval of the rezoning request for the subject site, which is just shy of an acre, located at the northwest corner of Orange Wood and 83rd Avenues. The first request is amending the land use designation from up to 2.5 dwelling units to the acre to up to 3.5 dwelling units per acre as it relates to the general plan. The second request is to rezon the property from agricultural to R18, which is a single family residential. The general plan land use designation request is compatible to the land use designations to the south, and the rezoning proposal would be compatible to the zoning classification to the north and the west. The subject property is approximately 3.5 miles from City Hall. Here's an area map to provide some context to the subject site, and as you can see, surrounding the property is existing residential land uses. Here is the conceptual site plan where the applicant intends to divide the parcel into three lots, and each lot will be developed for residential land use. The item was heard before a planning commission on February the 22nd of this year. Two residents spoke expressing concerns of the possibility for two-story homes. I'm the mayor and council, as you can see in the request, it's a straight zoning request, so they have the ability to build up to two stories. However, the applicant did indicate that their intent is to develop single-story homes. With that, the planning commission recommended approval of GPA 23-03 as written and ZN 23-05 with the stipulations that's outlined in the staff report, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms.? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Perry, I do have one question. I'm looking at the conceptual site plan. Are they dedicating any easement along the west side of 83rd? Because you know, our intent is to reconstruct 83rd Avenue, hopefully starting this fall, and one of the exercises we're going through right now is to talk to all the property owners and make sure they're on board with the reconstruction plans and any easement they might have to give to the city. So, will there be an easement along 83rd Avenue?
Mayor, council members, it's in the stipulation, it outlines the dedications that they will need to provide for 83rd Avenue for the development, the future improvements to 83rd, as well as the apron that will accommodate the reconstruction that the city is planning for the area.
All right, thank you.
Any other council members? Okay, I've got a Jerome, I'm sorry, Jerome Gill. Am I pronouncing that right? So you do not need to speak, sir? Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, so I'm looking at the development standards and the building maximum height is 30 feet. That's what the development standards that are in the packet in the planning commission report. Didn't I, I might have misheard you. I thought that the, has the builder agreed to only build single-story homes on these three lots?
Mayor, council members, yes. The applicant indicated in planning commission as well as when they went through the citizen participation process that it is truly their intent to develop the sites with single-family residential and not two stories.
Okay, that's their intent, but I mean, they have an entitlement for 30 feet height. So, I mean, if they decided, if they changed their mind and decided to build higher, higher, there's, they have the entitlement to do so, do they not?
Mayor, council members, this question did come up at planning commission, and it's indicated, the applicant is requesting a straight zoning. So what we did not want to do is take away the rights that's afforded to the applicant if the zoning application is approved, that that property owner should be rewarded the ability to develop the site in accordance to what our development standard states for that zoning district, and that we, the applicant stepped forward at planning commission and truly indicated on record that that was his intent to do single-family residential. So we kind of stood on his word based on whether it's in his narrative, but did not believe that it was appropriate to step them to single-story considering that they was doing a straightforward zoning case.
Mayor, if I could, would it, would it be prudent for the council to add that stipulation just to ensure that, I mean, properties change hands, there could be another developer at some point that has this entitlement for 30 feet? This just recently happened to a parcel that the city sold over where Glen Lays Golf Course used to be. So, the entitlement exists and I just, you know, a way, I don't know any other way to assure people other than to have a stipulation that they need to be single-story properties because I, you know, I understand and I'm not questioning this current developer, but things change, priorities change, they may decide to flip this piece of property and somebody else may decide to develop it, and they may want to build two-story homes there, and there's nothing to prevent them from doing that.
Mayor, council members, if it pleases council, then they could incorporate that stipulation. The applicant was fine with that stipulation being incorporated for planning commission, but I would indicate that when they go through the citizen participation process, staff kind of evaluated in the number of individuals that expressed concerns, and we based that on the notion of what the preference is versus a development that would truly impact surrounding existing development. So, our position was that it was two residents that voiced some concern about the potential for two-story. The fact that the applicant went on record at planning commission to say that was his intent, we just didn't want to restrict the applicant today or anyone in the future, provided that they develop it per the development standards. But once again, if it pleases council and they want to add the stipulation.
Mayor, I would defer to Councilmember Clark, it's her district, but...
Yeah, before we go any further, is the applicant here? Could, could you come up to the podium? Because you might be able to just put this thing to bed real quick. If we, if we go ahead and pass this with that stipulation, are you guys good with that?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jordan Greenman, 1621 West Willetta, Phoenix, Arizona, here on behalf of the applicant. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, there is R18 zoning surrounding this property. People are entitled all around to have two stories. To prevent us from doing so seems somewhat unreasonable. If it's something that Honorable Mayor and council members would like to add, you're welcome to, although we believe that is a restrictive use, particularly because this is R18 surrounding the property. The notion that we should not be allowed to do the R18 standard seems somewhat unreasonable, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I certainly am not going to argue the point, but if, if, if you say your intent is to, and then you don't want us to actually put that in, then it sounds like, you know, it's just muddying the water. I'll just, I just wanted to find out, if we put that on, are you guys okay with that? Or you're not okay with that?
Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate it from Honorable Mayor and council members to not put the stipulation on.
Okay. You have a question?
Yes. Ms. Perry, this is not for the applicant. Ms. Perry, there are homes surrounding this. Are any of the homes surrounding this proposed three-house development two-story?
Mayor, council, it's been a while since I've been to the site. If memory serves me correctly, not adjacent to the subject site, there is not.
That's what I thought. I think in terms of being sensitive to the surrounding property owners who are one-story, I would appreciate it if you could accept the restriction of one stories as opposed to two stories. Perhaps the stipulation would be that if you are adjacent to another one-story property, we'll build one story. Would that be, and let me ask the applicant, would that be a satisfactory stipulation?
Councilmember Clark, thank you for the comment and the question. If I remember properly, and not to disagree with Deputy Director Perry, I believe there is an adjacent property, property directly to the south of the middle lot, which is Lot B, that is two stories, and I do remember that.
I would just say that, ask that it be compatible. If the adjacent property, next, the adjacent property is one story, you'll build one story. The adjacent property is two-story, you have the right to build two-story.
Understood, Councilmember Clark. We are comfortable with that in consideration that these properties are surrounded by up to three or four properties in every direction. So we are willing to adhere to that stipulation.
So, Ms. Perry, might we consider a stipulation that says the applicant will build one-story units, I don't know the exact wording, adjacent to existing one-story units and may, and may build two-story units adjacent to existing two-story units?
Mayor, council, I believe this stipulation is appropriate as you indicated. I will only change unit to single-family residential.
I couldn't hear all that.
I would only suggest that we change unit to be more specific to single-family residential.
Single-family residential. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Turner's next.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Melner. I'm looking at the site on Google Earth right now, and it appears to me that there are three properties that border the site on the south. All are, all are partly border the site, and of those three, two of them are two-story. There's a one-story due west and two single stories to the north. So it kind of seems to me like all of these have two-story, at least some portion of their property borders a two-story property and certainly has backyard views from two-story properties. So I'm not sure that our stipulation makes a world of difference. I'm inclined personally to approve this without the stipulation. I don't think it's an infringement on the closest neighbors. They've got two-story buildings and they either already live next door to a two-story house, or they live in a two-story house to the south, which is what it looks to me like the, where the yard's going to be. The access, the driveway or whatever is on the north side, is that correct?
That is correct, council member.
Right. So these houses will be to the south side of that lot, and they back up against two-story houses, all are in part.
I, Mayor, I, I understand your reasoning, but I think just for the sake of further understanding, I will offer the stipulation, but changing it to single-family residences rather than units. So I will offer that stipulation.
Yeah, hold on one second. Were you done?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I, I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Gill to come up. I think he's a neighbor over there, and I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Again, sir, state your name, city you live in, and the district if you know where you live.
My name is Jerome Gill. I'm at 7407 North 83rd Drive, which is just directly south. I'm in the cul-de-sac, and I do have the two-story house right behind that development. So we've been there for, I bought in 2009, I think that was developed in 2006. This new area that has been developed where you could see in the center, those hell, those two lots that, or the one lot that's in discussion right now, they didn't sell off when everybody else did, and their stipulation when they built those properties, everything around in that area was going to be a single-story property. And all of my neighbors with me that are adjacent on the south side are all in agreement that they don't, we don't want two-story houses back behind us. So that's my, that's my only concern. If things, and I'm just here just to make sure that none of that has changed. I wasn't going to speak if nothing was going to change. So I just wanted clarification, and I'm sorry too. It's hard for me to hear some of you speaking, my hearing is bad, so I apologize.
Mine is too. Mayor, may I ask him a question?
Sure.
So it's okay for you to have a two-story and look down into these people's backyards when they're one-story, but you won't, I mean, how is that fair?
The zoning at the time, whenever my house was built and that, that development for Rovi Farm was developed, it was under different circumstances. Whenever they put in these properties in that center area.
East of the south.
They made the stipulation that all those homes were going to be single-story. That property that's in question right now was a holdout. property that's in question right now was a holdout. That property owner finally sold to the new owner who wants to develop, which we have no problems with them developing it, but they should follow the same guidelines as what was originally done in that area.
So that was your understanding at the time?
That was our understanding, yes.
When you bought your property?
Yes.
Okay.
And we...
Thank you.
We, we were involved with, whenever they developed that original area, we're like, that's fine as long as everything's single-story, which they agreed to. So I feel that, you know, since they were holdouts, they should still fall under that same precedence.
Thank you, Mayor. So that was what my point was I was going to make, and I appreciate you speaking, sir, is that that new neighborhood are larger lots because they're, that, all larger lots and single-story homes. And, and I don't have a problem with the higher density if the neighbors don't have a higher. So we're allowing higher density in this small little parcel, but, which isn't consistent with the neighborhood, but I think the neighbors are okay with that. But this is really just an extension of that existing neighborhood, that little parcel that didn't sell. And for it to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood, I think that it should be single-story. And we were told in the presentation that, that they don't have a problem agreeing to single-story. So I'm a little confused about why all the discussion if there's no problem with the single-story, but, you know, for the compatibility and the extension of the neighborhood, I don't think the higher density, which is what we're doing here, is a problem. But the two-stories, you know, when you drive up and down streets, it's just the, that are all single-story, larger-lot homes. And I think that's, I think that, my opinion is that's what it should be, is that we should have a stipulation, single-story homes. Because the neighborhood of the south is Roe v. Farms, that's a different neighborhood. So there, you know, there's a boundary there of two different types of neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
I would, would, since the builder or the owner of the property has agreed to the stipulation that Councilmember Clark mentioned, is that correct?
That is correct, council member.
Then I would, I would second that, that proposal.
I made the motion.
Mayor, point of order. What, there's been a lot of conversation. What is the stipulation that you'd like?
The stipulation would be, is that the applicant would be required to build two-story single-family units, two-story single-family residences adjacent to existing two-story single-family residential units. And where there were one-story, the applicant would build one-story single-family units adjacent to existing one-story single-family units. That's a long stipulation, but basically I'm asking that the applicant match what is existent adjacent to the vacant property.
Yeah. One second. My, my problem with adjacent is I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means behind, in front, or beside.
Well, that's what I was, it's because the, is it north, south? South is, there's a lot of two-stories to the south. There are no two-stories in that neighborhood. They're all single-story in that neighborhood on, what is the name of the streets there? Vista, Carroll Lane, 83rd. Those are all single-story homes. So that's, to the south, I believe, is Roe v. Farms, if I'm not mistaken. And they're mixed, you know, elevations and single-story, two-story, but that's a completely different neighborhood. So I, I feel like this neighborhood should match with single-story homes regardless of what's behind them in a, in another subdivision.
Well, then you'll vote down my stipulation.
Okay.
And you'll remake a different stipulation.
I, I wanted to understand what she means. Do you mean in any direction, if there's any direction?
Any, any direction, any adjacent direction, which would basically be north or south.
So, so let me, let me ask a quick question, Councilmember Clark. If the first home they build is a two-story, then the one immediately next door could be a two-story and the one next to that could be a two-story?
You would ask a question like that?
I'm just...
For which I have no answer.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the, what we're doing here.
But that's a good question. And I cannot answer. I never would have either.
That's the way I'd do it.
Yeah, Mayor. I...
Hold on.
Mayor and council, I was just given legal advice from Michael Bailey, that we should probably adjourn this item, go to the next item, and then come back to this item, just so that we can work out an acceptable stipulation, if it's not to just adhering to what was on the record at planning commission.
Okay, so you're, you're willing to bring this back at another date?
Mayor, we would like to bring it back to you after the next item, item number 24, and then we'll come back before you with item 23.
All right, sounds like they got their work cut out for them really fast.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's go ahead and recess this item. Is that how we say that?
Actually, Mayor, if you just go to the next item and just table it, and that's fine. We're just going to step out and try and resolve.
Okay, we're going to table this item and go on to our next, Ms. Power.
Ordinance number O-24-10, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located at the southeast corner of Peoria Avenue and Saraval Avenue in the city of Glendale, consisting of approximately 12.44 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 244, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Public hearing is now open on item 24, ordinance number 024-10. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request for council to approve the annexation adoption. This item was first heard before a city council at a workshop on November the 28th of last year. The site is approximately 12.4 acres in size and located at the southeast corner of Peoria and Saraval Avenue. Something a little unique about this particular site, the county zoning is for neighborhood commercial. And as you know, the city would apply the most compatible zoning classification upon the initial annexation adoption, which is also neighborhood commercial. So in the county, as well as them coming to the city, will allow for commercial land uses. That went by fast, sorry about that. Here is the annexation map, so you can see that the proposed site is touching within the city boundaries. Here's an area map to give context. Once again, it's shared at the workshop, that the commercial land uses would be supportive to the single-family residential in the area. As of right now, the applicant would not be proposing a rezoning changes, changes, and they're proposing in their first phase for a convenience store with a gas station, which will require a conditional use permit with approval from planning commission. And tentatively, it is scheduled to go before planning commission on this Thursday, provided council approves the adoption of the request this evening. The blank petition was heard before council earlier this year, in which one individual spoke with concerns about the process, more specifically about how the notification was conducted. Staff was able to address all the questions that she had. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I have no speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone needing to speak on this item? No? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, we're going to go back to our previous.
We need a motion?
We need a motion on 24.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance O-24-10.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second, Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. I do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Now we're going to go backwards.
Mayor and council, if I may have some clarification, we had a motion on the floor related to a stipulation. And the stipulation was that the property owner would be able to construct two-stories if there was, let's call it adjacency. Is that any adjacency without any other adjacency to a single-story? So what happens if it's a corner lot and on one side it's two-story and on the other it's single-story? What does that mean then, based on the stipulation that was provided?
Mayor, I withdraw that stipulation, which I am entitled to do, am I not?
You are 100% entitled to do that.
And instead, I am offering an alternative stipulation that the property owner be required to build one-story homes on those three lots. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion?
Go ahead. I have a question. Would that, just... Mayor and council, if you just hold for a moment, let me confer with the applicant and tabitha.
As many of the rancher in Texas that didn't want all the land in Texas, just what was
Mayor and council, in keeping with the discussions at planning commission, the applicant is in agreeance to a stipulation that states that they will only construct single-story homes on the three lots.
Well, that's just got easier. Okay.
So, Mayor, point of order, at this point in time, you have two motions that you need to make. You need to make a motion with regard to a resolution approving an amendment to the general plan amendment, and then a motion with regard to the ordinance. At the time you make the motion to the ordinance, if you're going to add a stipulation, you need to do it at that time.
Got it.
Who's making that motion?
Well, don't, actually, the first action I'd ask is that you take a motion regarding the resolution, and then I'll interrupt you again.
I'd like to make a motion as stated by our attorney.
Mayor, I move we pass and adopt Resolution Number R-24-30.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we do need a separate vote on this. Okay, we need a roll call vote on this also. No?
That would, that, that will work, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mayor, I, I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 024-09, with the added stipulation that the applicant be required to build one-story home, one-story residence, single-family residential.
Second.
I'll get it right. Thank you.
Second.
You good with that?
I understand what's being said.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, we did have a second, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm happy the applicant's willing to concede the construction of other, of two-story homes. I don't, I don't think it's particularly fair that we require that, but if the applicant's okay with it, I'll vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments. We have, I'll just read this. The next on the agenda is the citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity of... My sheets are so messed up here. Okay. Let's do the council comments first. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, Mayor, just one comment. I'd like to thank all the citizens that turned out from my last Yucca District meeting. The attendance was impressive and the food was very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, I do have, I've announced it before, but it's a week from this Thursday, May 2nd. The, I think it's the third annual Choya District BBQ, Spring BBQ. All Choya residents are welcome, as well as all staff members, council members. Our new, just soon-to-be-sworn-in council member, Leonardo Baldinegro, also, I mentioned it to him. So hope to see everybody out there. They'll be cooking on-site. It's usually a pretty fun event. At the Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center, 5:30 next Thursday, May 2nd. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
And I have nothing. Now, we're going to go ahead and go to our citizens' comments. We make the available to our citizens to bring information, business for the council that's not on the printed agenda. For our welcome speakers, the podium, I want to remind the audience and anyone speaking tonight that this is a public meeting, and we're not going to tolerate any profanity or threats to the council. Not that I expect you to do that, but just need to get it out there. So with that said, Angel Grotto, did I pronounce it right? Okay, you have three minutes, sir. If you'd state your name, the district that you're from, if you know it. If it's not in Glendale, then the city you're from.
Yes. Yes, my name is Angel Grotto. I'm here to speak behalf on District Downtown Glendale. I'm not quite sure which one. Ladies and gentlemen, today I stand before you to address a pressing issue that concerns the heart of our community, the Glendale Works Program, established with the noble aim to providing day labor employment opportunities for individuals experiencing homelessness in Glendale. This program was meant to be a beacon of hope, a chance for those in need to regain their footing and rebuild their lives. However, the reality is far from what was envisioned. Instead of serving as a lifeline, Glendale Works has become a breeding ground for law-breaking accounts that threaten the safety and well-being of its clients. Reports of drug use and criminal, criminal trafficking among those seeking day labor have become alarming frequent, alarmingly frequent, turning vulnerable individuals into unwitting victims of exploitation. What's worse, the very spaces meant to offer refuge and assistance have now transformed into hubs of illicit activity. Clients left to fend for themselves resort to illegal sleeping and drug use throughout the week, with no regards for the consequences. Meanwhile, drug distribution flourishes unchecked, creating an environment rife with danger and despair. It's clear that Glendale Works has lost all semblance of integrity and effectiveness. Despite the desperate need for change, the program has failed to provide the necessary support and resources to facilitate meaningful transformation. Instead, it has become a catalyst for further deterioration, perpetuating a cycle of dependency and despair. But we refuse to accept this as the status quo. It's time to take action, to reclaim our community and restore dignity and respect to those who have been marginalized and forgotten. We must demand the immediate cessation of Glendale Works Program and the implementation of comprehensive surveillance measures to ensure accountable, accountability and safety. Furthermore, we call for the relocation of the program to a more suitable location, far from residential areas where complete surveillance can be maintained to prevent further exploitation and harm. There is no place for this in Glendale. Together, let us stand united and are resolved to protect the most vulnerable among us and build a future where every individual has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Rory Gorey. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
It's Gorey, but you can imagine going through grade school with that name. I'll take anything. Mr. Mayor, council, Rory Gorey, Ocatillo District. I'm actually going to change what I was going to speak about. The last couple of days, I've had the privilege to talk to a lot of members of the Ocatillo District, and I just want to say, everyone is excited about our new council member and we are looking forward to work, working with him. So I just wanted to say, welcome aboard to the Ocatillo District to our new council member. Thank you.
And I thank you for that, sure. Hopefully you'll stick around for his swearing in. So, folks, listen up. We're going to go ahead and adjourn, and then I'm going to ask everybody to leave the room, but don't leave the building because we need time to kind of rearrange some stuff in here for the swearing in. It'll take, I guess, about 15 minutes. So with that, there being no further business before the council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. And with no objection, this council is meeting as adjourned. Please don't leave, just if you'll step into the other room, that would be awesome. Please don't leave, just if you'll step into the other room, that would be awesome. That'll give them time to straighten things up here.